The goal of 8th grade career cruising is really to introduce students to both the career technical education offerings as well as the three-year course sequences for their science classes. They're gonna have a lot of choices when they get into high school and so we want them to be prepared so that they can make the best choices for them so that it connects them with their future aspirations.
I actually think it's actually really cool because it exposes them to some of the curriculum that they have and they can go and they can experience stuff. This hands-on station that you guys have here is actually really cool because it allows them to kind of have an experience of what they could see.
It's a great day for our students at this P A, so first time they really get a look at what the high school has to offer.
The career that is most appealing to me is being a physicist, especially in quantum physics.
And I would like to be a graphic designer to make video games.
My favorite experience has been making the puppets in the theater section.
This gives them an opportunity to hear from lots of people that give them all the same message that they need to prepare.
This is an opportunity for you to be open-minded and really explore what your path is.
Mr. Atkinson in our engineering program designed some of these cardboard boxes. Today, we're having the students put them together. These are cut out on a laser cutter, so for a few days, we cut them all out and the kids are assembling it. So we're here to represent our program for the career cruising day.
Kids this week have been very interested in what the safety department does and particularly what the mobile service unit does for the district and for them. And they've asked a lot of questions about what it takes to get into our job build.
I'm here to promote any career that comes out of geology. It will satisfy your environmental science, geology. I brought some of the earth beneath our feet so that the kids can see the salary that they can get and the fun they can have.
We are going to review all this information when we come back from vacation and hopefully the students may make good selection of the CTE classes that they can opt in high school.
Now, we cover the 8 through G requirements with our students, but it's really nice for them to hear this and the students are excited. This is a great day.
Today's event is a pretty good opportunity to get an idea of what is expected of them in high school, to familiarize themselves with the 8 through G requirements, and to get a few conversations in with actual students going through the different programs.
It's pretty cool because you get to like follow a path they want to do and pursue that career later on.
On today's Bridging Futures, we join 8th grade middle school students for the first annual career cruising.
Today, we're learning about different career paths we can go to so that in the future, we can be better off. They're giving us different career choices and exams to let us know where we're going to, and we're learning about our future.
We are hosting our first annual career cruising for 8th grade middle school students. The goal of 8th grade career cruising is really to introduce students to both the career technical education offerings as well as the three-year course sequences for their science classes. They're gonna have a lot of choices when they get into high school and so we want them to be prepared so that they can make the best choices for them so that it connects them with their future aspirations.
I actually think it's actually really cool because it exposes them to some of the curriculum that they have and they can go and they can experience stuff. This hands-on station that you guys have here is actually really cool because it allows them to kind of have an experience of what they could see.
It's a great day for our students at this P A, so first time they really get a look at what the high school has to offer.
The career that is most appealing to me is being a physicist, especially in quantum physics.
And I would like to be a graphic designer to make video games.
My favorite experience has been making the puppets in the theater section.
This gives them an opportunity to hear from lots of people that give them all the same message that they need to prepare.
This is an opportunity for you to be open-minded and really explore what your path is.
Mr. Atkinson in our engineering program designed some of these cardboard boxes. Today, we're having the students put them together. These are cut out on a laser cutter, so for a few days, we cut them all out and the kids are assembling it. So we're here to represent our program for the career cruising day.
Kids this week have been very interested in what the safety department does and particularly what the mobile service unit does for the district and for them. And they've asked a lot of questions about what it takes to get into our job build.
I'm here to promote any career that comes out of geology. It will satisfy your environmental science, geology. I brought some of the earth beneath our feet so that the kids can see the salary that they can get and the fun they can have.
We are going to review all this information when we come back from vacation and hopefully the students may make good selection of the CTE classes that they can opt in high school.
Now, we cover the 8 through G requirements with our students, but it's really nice for them to hear this and the students are excited. This is a great day.
Today's event is a pretty good opportunity to get an idea of what is expected of them in high school, to familiarize themselves with the 8 through G requirements, and to get a few conversations in with actual students going through the different programs.
It's pretty cool because you get to like follow a path they want to do and pursue that career later on.
On today's Bridging Futures, we join 8th grade middle school students for the first annual career cruising.
Today, we're learning about different career paths we can go to so that in the future, we can be better off. They're giving us different career choices and exams to let us know where we're going to, and we're learning about our future.
We are hosting our first annual career cruising for 8th grade middle school students. The goal of 8th grade career cruising is really to introduce students to both the career technical education offerings as well as the three-year course sequences for their science classes. They're gonna have a lot of choices when they get into high school and so we want them to be prepared so that they can make the best choices for them so that it connects them with their future aspirations.
I actually think it's actually really cool because it exposes them to some of the curriculum that they have and they can go and they can experience stuff. This hands-on station that you guys have here is actually really cool because it allows them to kind of have an experience of what they could see.
It's a great day for our students at this P A, so first time they really get a look at what the high school has to offer.
The career that is most appealing to me is being a physicist, especially in quantum physics.
And I would like to be a graphic designer to make video games.
My favorite experience has been making the puppets in the theater section.
This gives them an opportunity to hear from lots of people that give them all the same message that they need to prepare.
This is an opportunity for you to be open-minded and really explore what your path is.
Mr. Atkinson in our engineering program designed some of these cardboard boxes. Today, we're having the students put them together. These are cut out on a laser cutter, so for a few days, we cut them all out and the kids are assembling it. So we're here to represent our program for the career cruising day.
Kids this week have been very interested in what the safety department does and particularly what the mobile service unit does for the district and for them. And they've asked a lot of questions about what it takes to get into our job build.
I'm here to promote any career that comes out of geology. It will satisfy your environmental science, geology. I brought some of the earth beneath our feet so that the kids can see the salary that they can get and the fun they can have.
We are going to review all this information when we come back from vacation and hopefully the students may make good selection of the CTE classes that they can opt in high school.
Now, we cover the 8 through G requirements with our students, but it's really nice for them to hear this and the students are excited. This is a great day.
Today's event is a pretty good opportunity to get an idea of what is expected of them in high school, to familiarize themselves with the 8 through G requirements, and to get a few conversations in with actual students going through the different programs.
It's pretty cool because you get to like follow a path they want to do and pursue that career later on.
On today's Bridging Futures, we join 8th grade middle school students for the first annual career cruising.
Today, we're learning about different career paths we can go to so that in the future, we can be better off. They're giving us different career choices and exams to let us know where we're going to, and we're learning about our future.
We are hosting our first annual career cruising for 8th grade middle school students. The goal of 8th grade career cruising is really to introduce students to both the career technical education offerings as well as the three-year course sequences for their science classes. They're gonna have a lot of choices when they get into high school and so we want them to be prepared so that they can make the best choices for them so that it connects them with their future aspirations.
I actually think it's actually really cool because it exposes them to some of the curriculum that they have and they can go and they can experience stuff. This hands-on station that you guys have here is actually really cool because it allows them to kind of have an experience of what they could see.
It's a great day for our students at this P A, so first time they really get a look at what the high school has to offer.
The career that is most appealing to me is being a physicist, especially in quantum physics.
And I would like to be a graphic designer to make video games.
My favorite experience has been making the puppets in the theater section.
This gives them an opportunity to hear from lots of people that give them all the same message that they need to prepare.
This is an opportunity for you to be open-minded and really explore what your path is.
Mr. Atkinson in our engineering program designed some of these cardboard boxes. Today, we're having the students put them together. These are cut out on a laser cutter, so for a few days, we cut them all out and the kids are assembling it. So we're here to represent our program for the career cruising day.
Kids this week have been very interested in what the safety department does and particularly what the mobile service unit does for the district and for them. And they've asked a lot of questions about what it takes to get into our job build.
I'm here to promote any career that comes out of geology. It will satisfy your environmental science, geology. I brought some of the earth beneath our feet so that the kids can see the salary that they can get and the fun they can have.
We are going to review all this information when we come back from vacation and hopefully the students may make good selection of the CTE classes that they can opt in high school.
Now, we cover the 8 through G requirements with our students, but it's really nice for them to hear this and the students are excited. This is a great day.
Today's event is a pretty good opportunity to get an idea of what is expected of them in high school, to familiarize themselves with the 8 through G requirements, and to get a few conversations in with actual students going through the different programs.
It's pretty cool because you get to like follow a path they want to do and pursue that career later on.
Today, we're learning about different career paths we can go to so that in the future, we can be better off. They're giving us different career choices and exams to let us know where we're going to, and we're learning about our future.
We are hosting our first annual career cruising for 8th grade middle school students. The goal of 8th grade career cruising is really to introduce students to both the career technical education offerings as well as the three-year course sequences for their science classes. They're gonna have a lot of choices when they get into high school and so we want them to be prepared so that they can make the best choices for them so that it connects them with their future aspirations.
I actually think it's actually really cool because it exposes them to some of the curriculum that they have and they can go and they can experience stuff. This hands-on station that you guys have here is actually really cool because it allows them to kind of have an experience of what they could see.
It's a great day for our students at this P A, so first time they really get a look at what the high school has to offer.
The career that is most appealing to me is being a physicist, especially in quantum physics.
Good evening. We are reconvening and may have a motion to adjourn closed session.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
An open session is reconvening at 7:04 PM. And let's start with the pledge of allegiance. And tonight, we have a special performance by Rialto High School, but first, let's have Rialto High School senior Alan Palma lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And now, the Rialto High School madrigals and Broadway Knights are performing "Happiness" from "You're a Good Man" Charlie Brown, which also happens to be the school's musical this year. Take it away, Knights! We want to thank Rialto High School choir director, Mr. Steven Rodriguez, and theater director, Mr. David Ireland, principal Arnie Ayala, and our parents, guardians, and family members who came out tonight to support our talented students. Go Knights! All right, and now, I'm going to turn it over to our student board member, Jasmine, because we have the high school DSEC.
Report out of closed session.
Oh, I'm sorry, we skipped a whole bunch. Mr. President Montes was unable to be here tonight, so Vice President O'Kelly is taking over and haven't done this for a couple of years. Okay, we have reconvened, open session, pledge of allegiance. Okay, report out of closed session, Dr. Avila.
Thank you, Vice President O'Kelly. The Board of Education accepted the request for a leave of absence for classified employee number 1292929, January 7, 2019 through June 30, 2019. The roll call vote was unanimous. And the Board of Education accepted the administrative appointment of Ricardo Carlos, multimedia marketing innovator, communications media services. The roll call vote was unanimous.
Thank you. And can I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
And preferential vote by student board member?
Aye.
And vote by board members?
Aye.
Okay, now, Jasmine, you may take over.
First up, we have Alan Palma from Rialto High School.
Hello again. Good evening, Honorable Board of Education, Superintendent Dr. Avila, and viewing audience. My name is Alan Palma, and I am a proud member of Rialto High School's ASV. Second semester is here, and we are excited to end the year strong. We would love to invite you to our sixth annual middle school leadership development day. This year, we are joining together with both Eisenhower and Carter to welcome all five middle schools ASV for a day of leadership training, collaboration, and communication skills. This event will take place on January 26 at Rialto High from 8:00 to 11:30 AM. Our winter blood drive will take place on January 31. Our goal is to collect 400 units to potentially serve over 1,000 patients at the Arrowhead Regional Medical Center. This blood drive is open for members of the community to donate, so please stop by if you can. One donation can save three lives. Our second annual college and career conference, led by our special education department, will be held on February 9 from 9:30 to 1:30. Students and parents will be able to meet representatives from various colleges, vocational programs, and job corps. Thank you for your time, and I look forward to seeing you on our campus at our events. Have a great evening and Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Carlos Garcia from Carter High School.
Good evening, Honorable Board of Education, viewing audience, and Superintendent Dr. Avila. My name is Carlos Garcia, and I am ASV Vice President at Carter High School. Before we get started, I would like to hope everyone had a great holiday season and wish everybody a Happy New Year. I'd like to congratulate our Carter High School math teacher, Mr. Aaron Thomas, for being selected as Riverside and San Bernardino Region Educator of the Year, moving forward as a state finalist as well. In December, all of our students participated in Rachel's Challenge. It was a very moving and heartfelt event. It has now become a program, and it is helping us improve on wellness and kindness. In December, we had our fifth PK parent graduation. We graduated a class of 80 parents, learned about college and career readiness, high school culture, testing, and STEM. In December, we also held our 2018 Young Men's Leadership Conference, which has been at Carter for the past three years. In three years, we had 428 students participate. This event has been developed and implemented through the collaborative efforts of the CHS staff and CHS AAPAC. This year, we had 218 students, 15 workshops, 18 presenters, and six schools that participated, which were Carter, Brawley High School, J Hugh, Eisenhower, and Casara. On Friday, December 14, our BSLA celebrated our third annual Kwanzaa celebration, a period of time during December where we paused to pray homage to our African heritage and culture. The event was well-attended and full of spirit and pride. We would also like to congratulate ASV President Jillian Figueroa, who was a softball star and got an acceptance for a full ride scholarship to San Jose State University. We'd also like to invite you guys to our upcoming events at the Book Fair, January 25 through February 1, the AP Student Celebration on January 17 in the theater at 8:30 AM, and our blood drive on January 30. Also, we have our Black History Lunchtime Event on February 6 during our lunchtimes. Thank you, Board of Education, viewing audience, and Dr. Avila. Have a great night.
Thank you.
And we have Caesar Ramos from Eisenhower High School.
Good evening, Honorable Board of Education, Superintendent Dr. Avila, and viewing audience. My name is Caesar Ramos, and I proudly serve as the ASV President at Eisenhower High School. It has been a long time since the last time we spoke to you, and I would first like to wish you all a Happy New Year. 2018 was an amazing year for Eisenhower High, in which we accomplished many wonderful things. Our football team entered their season as CAF champions with a 14-0 streak. We also held our well-organized, successful winter assembly, in which we recognized our winter sports with amazing performances to entertain our audience. During November, we finished our No Shave November collections, which funds will serve for our Sold Out For Kids event. On just our second day of school, our ASV has made sure to make people feel appreciated and delivered a welcome back tree for students during lunch. We have also created a friendly competition in which we hope to encourage school punctuality by rewarding classes in which all students arrive on time to school. I would also like to inform that our new auditorium has been completed, and as I had the privilege to visit it, I could say that it is completely beautiful. We are thrilled as well to inform you and invite you to be a part of our upcoming events. A winter promo will take place on January 19 at the Victoria Gardens Cultural Center, where we will demonstrate our high school spirit and celebrate the new year. On January 18, we have a planned trip to measure the shoe size of the kids at a local inventory for our Sold Out For Kids event. And on January 24, our senior class will host our annual senior supper, where they will make one of the most important and difficult decisions of their life. They will vote on their prom team. That is all from us. We wish you well, and we hope for your support at our future events. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, and now we are going to have Board Member Vina Walker distribute the state PBIS Silver and First Time Bronze Level Awards. And it looks like there's quite a few of them. Mr. Ayala, she might need your help.
Positive Behaviors Interventions and Supports, also known as PBIS, is a powerful nationwide program which describes methods used to identify and support desired behaviors in the school setting. PBIS is about finding new alternative ways to reduce or eliminate poor behaviors through encouragement of positive behaviors while nurturing the social emotional needs of our students. Entering its third year in the district, PBIS in the REUSD has been recognized in the state for two years straight. All 17 REUSD Silver Level and Bronze Level Schools honored tonight, reflected excellence in measurement of fidelity as well as efforts in implementing the core features of PBIS. Mrs. Melissa Rubio, the PBIS Coordinator, and Mrs. Angela Brantley, Lead Agent of Student Services, they worked countless hours with counselors, teachers, and students to build and grow student-centered programs here in our district. According to Superintendent Dr. Avila, through our high school wellness centers and the hard work of our counselors, school site staff has made a positive difference in our students' lives. Thank you to our Silver Level State Winners and our First Time Bronze Level Schools. On behalf of the Board of Education, congratulations to all of you for the state honor. When I call your name or your school, please come up. We're going to start here. Okay, there is no list over here. Okay. If my vision is not, I can't. Oh, okay, cool, cool. Beavis Elementary School, Silver Level. Boyd Elementary School, Silver Level. Casey Elementary School, Silver. Eisenhower High School, Silver Level. Hugh Banks Elementary School.
What level for Hugh Banks?
This is all Silver Level.
Can we have groups of pictures as well? Five again.
Oh, okay.
So.
Start right now?
So let's take this picture, and then the next back. It just gets better on social media for that. Yes, if you are part of that school, please come in.
So our next group of awardees is Cussera Middle School, Silver Level. Henry Elementary School, Silver Level. And this is Henry. And Kelly Elementary School. Kelly.
That's five real quick, so let's get that. You guys, the principal, senior, if you can come up. Board, if you can get behind them. There we are. And everything, do this. There you are. And we're making right there. That's the counter. Hold on, so Kelly's talking, give me one second. I just don't want that. I just don't want that. Perfect picture of them. There you go. One. One more.
Our next recipient is Rialto High School, Silver Level. Rialto Middle School, Silver Level recipient. Is this Rialto Middle coming? Yes. Simpson Elementary School. Curtis? You're like, you're just sending for the picture, right? And then Simpson Elementary.
Get a little closer.
Take one step forward.
Please, there you go. Want to make sure something's in there? And the last of the Silver, right?
Yes. Last of the Silver will go to J Hugh Middle School. And Trap Elementary School. We said your name, Carter. There we go.
Come up a little bit. Board of Education, please come up a little bit here.
So our next group of recipients are going to be the Bronze Level recipients, and we'll start with Werner Elementary School. And Morris Elementary School. So this will be your group?
Yes. This is the last of our Silver group, bronze. Oh, I'm sorry, Bronze group. Get a little bit closer. Gold. Not yet. Next year. Yes. A little bit closer.
Now we go with individual.
Those are your side. Oh. Central. So our next group are going to be actually for the individual awards for PBIS, and our first award goes to Melissa Rubio, for Silver Level recipient. The red carpet. Angelica Manzo. Oh, she's on? Salvador Navarro, Silver Level recipient. Lindsey Morton, Silver Level recipient. Pat Connor, Silver Level recipient. Shelley Gates, Silver Level recipient. We have Sharon Stratter. Mary Ann Delgado. Maria Franco. And our last name is Amy Lugo. So those were our last of our individual Silver recipients for the PBIS statewide awards. We are so excited about the work we're doing in Rialto. Thank you all to the individuals. Make sure that you tell everyone. And we're going to get one last picture.
Well, congratulations to all of the PBIS Award recipients. We're very, very proud that so many are adhering to the program so diligently. And now we are going to move on with comments, public comments from the floor. At this time, any person wishing to speak on any item not on the agenda will be granted three minutes. Do we have any, Dr. Avila?
We do.
Hi, good evening, board members. Good evening, Dr. Avila and parents. My name is Denise Paredes. I'm here because my daughter's been bullied since she was in elementary. The last incident was in December 12. You guys might have seen it in the news. I sent emails to the school board in the district. Especially, Dr. Avila, you responded back to me and told me that you were going to set up a meeting with me to talk about the case. Never got that meeting with you. Had a meeting with the school board, two meetings, didn't get anywhere, any solution. To this day, my daughter, today in the morning, didn't have a school to go to because we haven't came up to a solution. Because of that bullying, that brutally beating that she got, she had a concussion. She's still suffering post-concussion syndrome. That young lady is still at the school. I don't know why she did that to my daughter. She could have done it to somebody else. She could do it to somebody else. How do you say? And they found her safety, and they found her education. She does have an IEP. So it's like, what are you guys going to do about it? I still haven't gotten any response from the district to get her back on board to another school. I got an email, what was it, before the Friday that the kids left from school, without my daughter going to school. And to this day, she doesn't have a school to go to because you guys cannot keep her safe. And this is not the first incident that happened. This is the second incident that happened within a month. The first incident happened, she reported it to the principal. The principal told her she will take care of it. My daughter walked out the door, got brutally attacked. The principal, the first, fell to report it to myself or her father. Call the school, found out that my daughter got in a fight, talked to the principal, and the principal told me, "Oh, I wasn't going to call you and let you know when's investigation was done." When that happened, I called the school district to talk to the superintendent. They didn't transfer me to yourself, Dr. Avila. They transferred me to Dr. John, to the supervisor. To this day, he said he was going to give me a call to solve the issue, the first incident, having received a call. I'm not the only parent that's frustrated, upset. I just seen you guys get an award for the safety, and I don't know whatever killed. You guys found my child. I'm not the only parent that feels like that. I have a lot of parents that feel like that. There's three parents here with me that feel the same way that I do. So what are you guys are going to do about it to stop the bullying, to have zero tolerance? What, wait until somebody gets really hurt or dies or something, or kills themselves at the school? My daughter got a head concussion. This went on for a minute. I have the video. There was a teacher present there, didn't do anything about it. Instead of doing it, something about it, she was cheering on the students. And even through social media, she's still getting bullied from Rialto Middle School, from other schools, making fun of her of what happened. That's not right. My daughter is 12 years old. She shouldn't have been going through this. And for her to go through this in this district, and me having to find maybe another district to go to for her to feel safe, because she went to the school Tuesday to return her books, she didn't feel safe at all. She had somebody to escort her to the library to return those books. She was shaking, crying, begging me not to take her to take this book back. But she has to do that. She has to do the right thing. So what is the district going to do about that?
Thank you. Dr. Avila, can you look into this tomorrow so we can get it straightened out?
I'll give the board an update.
Do we have any more speakers?
We do not.
Okay. Then we have public comments on agenda items. Any person wishing to speak on any item on the agenda will be granted three minutes. Do we have any?
We have none.
Okay. Comments from Association Executive Board Members. From REA, Rialto Education Association. Do we have anyone wishing to speak tonight? Okay. CSEA, California School Employees Association.
Good evening, Rialto Unified Family. Please excuse my voice, I'm getting over a cold myself. Tonight, I would like to introduce two people with me, part of my executive board. Let me start off by actually introducing myself. My name is Chris Cordosco. I'm the new chapter president for Rialto 203. With me tonight is Carol Bug, my treasurer, and Diana Silva, my chief union steward. I would like to, first of all, congratulate everyone for the PBIS awards. It's a very important program. CSEA backs wholeheartedly. I also would like to, I'm thrilled to see the amount of appointment, or not appointments, of new jobs that have been created within our district. I am hoping that it doesn't stop. We still have a lot of classified staff out there covering vacant positions, and we still have more positions to fill. I look forward to working with personnel and with the district in getting those positions filled. Also, we are currently getting our negotiation team together, working on our proposal, and I hope to be standing in front of you in February, making that proposal to you. That's pretty much it for me. I also wanted to say to Rialto High School, good job. I love seeing the arts. A former Eisenhower student and art student myself. Thank you and good evening.
Thank you. Communication Workers of America.
Yes, good evening, ladies and gentlemen, members of the board. My name is Teresa Hunter. I'm the AVP, Area Vice President with CWA 9588. I'm the incoming AVP. I took over from Stephen Gianni. This is my first time attending a Rialto Unified School District Board Meeting, and as you know, Heather Estrick is your chief steward. So I'm here simply this evening just to make my introduction and just to let you know I will be back at some point. We have a huge area, San Bernardino, Rialto, and I look forward to working with all of you. Thank you so much, and have a great day. Thank you so much and have a great evening.
Thank you. And Rialto School Managers Association.
None.
Okay. Next, we have comments from the superintendent.
Thank you, Vice President O'Kelly. And I'm sure you've heard it plenty of times, but it doesn't hurt to hear one more time. Happy New Year to everyone. We are very happy that students and staff are back, hopefully well rested and safe and ready to continue to grow during the second half of the school year. Big congratulations to our PBIS Silver and Bronze Level Schools and Individuals. A big thank you to the principals, counselors, teachers, support staff, and everyone else who played a big part in implementing our PBIS programs at each of our 20, well, 28 of our 29 schools. And also, January is the National Mentoring Month, and I do want to send a special thank you to Mr. Joseph Williams, who is also the, currently the clerk of the San Bernardino Community College District. Mr. Williams has spent quite a bit of time working mentoring our students here in the district. He is a local product here of the district, and he spends quite a bit of time mentoring our DSAC students, including today, he was with them really going over a lot of the basic steps that they need to take starting now in order to prepare themselves for employment. He was also kind enough to donate to each of them a copy of a book he co-authored entitled Making Connections Work: The Young Adult's Guide to Getting a Job and Moving Up in the World of Work. Had very valuable conversation with them, very down-to-earth. Really appreciate him taking the time to spend that valuable time with our kids. I also want to congratulate, I believe I might have mentioned it previously at our last meeting, but it doesn't, again, hurt to mention it one more time, our Nutrition Services Department. Some of the members are here today, Fassad and her team. I did receive an email indicating, indicating that they had received a national recognition. They were one of eight districts, we are one of eight districts in the Western United States and only two in California to be recognized for the summer meals program, the quality programs that they've been providing for the last few years here in our community. So Fassad and your team, if you can please stand and be recognized. We have something formal in the coming months, but thank you for all you do for our kids and our community. Thank you very much. And coming up, just a couple of announcements. We do have plans to attend the 39th Annual Dr. Martin Luther King Prayer Breakfast on Monday, January the 21st, 7:30 at Cal State San Bernardino. And I know that some staff and some board members have plans to attend. Looking forward to that exciting annual event. And also at Carter High School on January the 24th at 6:00 PM. The school will host our first of three community safety forums in which a comprehensive panel of professionals will address various safety concerns and updates. We are partnering with the City of Rialto. Our top city police officials will also be in attendance to answer any community questions or concerns. So a big thank you to the education safety officers and committee members for holding a series of each of these three community forums, starting with Carter High School, followed by Eisenhower in February, and our third and final will be at Rialto High School in March. And again, something that doesn't cost any money is being kind. It is our district's unofficial motto, kindness. It doesn't hurt to say hello to someone as we're walking by them. It doesn't hurt to say, it's a nice pair of shoes you're wearing, that's a nice smile you have, something appropriate, but again, something kind of simple work can make a person's entire day. Sometimes it can last a lifetime just by hearing something polite, something positive. And again, I know it's a little redundant, but it goes back to our Nutrition Services Department. They have taken the lead in a challenge that I proposed to the management team in the summer about promoting kindness. And every Monday, we received a message of kindness from the department, from Fassad, promoting the kindness topic for the week. And it's really catching on because now schools are taking on challenges to challenge their staff or students to perform acts of kindness throughout the district. And it's very, very touching. I received this recently from Jasmine Valenzuela, who came to my office and said, thank you very much for what you're doing. And it fits with our theme that we're trying to embrace here in the district. And so I have it in display in my office. And it also goes along with that kickoff event where we're really trying to promote Rialto love, appropriately, Rialto love. So thank you, Fassad and the team, for taking the lead and nurturing kindness throughout the district and really challenging other employees in our, in our, in our district and our community to just be kind to each other. It goes a long way and makes a huge difference for each of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Avila. And now we're going to have comments from the members of the Board of Education, starting with our student board member Jasmine.
Thank you, Vice President O'Kelly. I just want to wish everyone a Happy New Year. Hope you guys had a great break and I'm excited to be back. I just want to give a shout out to other schools. We only have one semester, so I hope all your events go great and I'm excited to hear about them. And just want to give a shout out to Rialto High Cheer for qualifying for Nationals this Saturday. And also, we're very excited to represent Rialto Unified for the first ever CIF championship this Saturday, so wishes luck. And I'm just looking forward to my last semester of high school, so yay.
Okay. We'll start with Board Member Ayala.
Thank you, Vice President O'Kelly. Just hearing that we made a list, a national list for taking care of our kids. And I think, you know, there's 1,100 school districts in just California. So I don't know the number, but I'm just guessing there's over 200,000 school districts in the United States. And we're on a top 10 list of some kind. That makes me feel really good about our community. I mean, I mean, think about the numbers there. Two, over 200,000 school districts? Why come they're not taking care of their kids? I know they do other things, but we can say, we feed our kids. We make sure they get a fair start. That's something to really be proud of because there's some people that are against that, but not this guy. I'm just overwhelmed with support there and being, you know, being proud that we're doing this together. This is us doing it. So with that in mind, I'll transition into my comments. Most of my comments are observations of my own family, 10 grandkids and graduating another year, you know. We'll start with focusing on the big picture. How many times have you heard somebody say, focus on the big picture? Well, the big picture can be sports, it can be your family, it can be your job, it can be a lot of things. With this in mind, we're focusing on our kids, okay? Whether they're living at home, whether in their college, or they're, they're here at Rialto Unified School District. And my observation, out of the 10 grandkids, I've had two recently pack up their bags and come home after their first year of college. Now, you, at first, when you hear this, you raise some concerns. Why? Well, in case that happens to your children, I just want to share some thoughts. Okay, so how do you react? Well, let's look at that big picture. We want our kids, and you could argue and debate it, but we want them to, we want them to thrive and be happy, kind of like a commercial for Kaiser, right? Thrive and be happy. And this is not the same for everybody. We're all individuals. We all have potentials. We all have different abilities. So when your children come up to you and they say, I need to take a break, I'm getting nervous, I'm not ready for this, you don't have to fight them. You know, this ain't a Gladiator stadium where we're going to fight till the end. Some people need a little more time. So, so far, just observations with these kids coming home, one of them is extremely happy, the pressure's off for the time being. The other one's a little bit confused, not sure what to do. I'll keep you posted. There's no names here. But the whole point here is that we're going to respect our children, we're going to give them a safe environment, we're going to love them. And if there's a one way to describe this, I've said it before, it's called unconditional love. Not everybody gets it. The people who get it are from the people that love you the most. Thank you so much for this time.
Thank you. Member Martinez?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Okay, going along with the big picture, if you will. These are the foundations for all jobs. It's easier to hire these skills and then to train STEM skills. Okay, the surprising thing Google learned about its employees and what it means for today's students. The conventional wisdom about 21st century skills holds that students need to master the STEM subjects, science, technology, engineering, and mathematics, and learn to code as well because that's where the jobs are. It turns out that this is a gross simplification of what students need to know and be able to do. And some proof for that comes from a surprising source, Google. All across America, students are anxiously finishing their what I want to be in college. Their college application essays advise to focus on STEM, but two recent studies of workplace success contradict the conventional wisdom about hard skills. Surprisingly, this research comes from the company most identified with the STEM-only approach, Google. Excuse me. Google originally set its hiring algorithms to sort for computer science students with top grades from elite science universities. In 2013, Google decided to test its hiring hypothesis. Project Oxygen, Project Oxygen, in case you want to look it up, shocked everyone to conclude that among the eight most important qualities of Google's top employees, STEM expertise comes in dead last. The seven top characteristics of success at Google are all soft skills. Being a good coach, communicating and listening well, possessing insights into others, including others from different, with different values and points of view, having empathy towards and being supportive of one's colleagues, being happy with my colleagues. Being a good critical thinker and problem solver, and being able to make connections across complex ideas. Google enlarged its previous hiring practices to include humanities majors, artists, and even MBAs. Project Aristotle, a study released by Google this past spring, 2017, further supports the importance of soft skills even in high-tech environments. Google data revealed that the most important and productive new ideas come from employees who don't have to be the smartest people in the room. Project Aristotle shows that the best teams at Google exhibit a range of soft skills. Equality, generosity, curiosity toward the ideas of your teammates, empathy, emotional intelligence, and topping the list, emotional safety, no bullying. Excuse me. Emotional safety, no bullying. To succeed, each and every team member must feel confident speaking up and making mistakes. They must know they are being heard. The top three most sought-after qualities of job recruiters, an ability to communicate with one's workers, coworkers, and aptitude for conveying the company's product and mission outside the organization. Shark Tank TV personality Mark Cuban, he looks for philosophy majors when he's investing in sharks most likely to succeed. STEM skills are vital to the world we live in today, but technology alone, as Steve Jobs famously insisted, is not enough. We desperately need the expertise of those who are educated to the human, cultural, and social as well as computational. No student should be prevented from majoring in any area they love based on a false idea of what they need to succeed. Broad learning skills are the key to long-term satisfying productive careers. What helps you thrive in a changing world isn't rocket science, it may just well be social science. And yes, even the humanities and the arts that contribute to making you not just workforce-ready, but world-ready. Not a surprise, I just don't communicate this often enough. STEM skills are over and above what you need as a basis, a foundation of being hired. This is just a little bit. I'll continue with it maybe next month.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez. And now we go to Clerk Ms. Walker.
Thank you. I just want to say congratulations to all those who received an award for our PBIS Awards, our Nutrition Department for the excellence that you all are exhibiting for the state around what we're doing in our department. And then again, to the new offices of CSEA, congratulations on that and your leadership. Just want to quickly just talk about, very quickly to say, thank you for reading that. I need to get that article and keep talking about it because they pushed so much about STEM and STEM. And kids often feel the stress of feeling like if they're not majoring in STEM, that they're not going to be successful and they're viewed as of less, their major or what their intentions are, are less valued. Which also has caused them to maybe come home after that first year because they're not invested, not invested in their own passion. So just really thank you for that article. I definitely am going to find, reproduce and send this back out to other people that I work with and other educators as well, especially to build up skills in these, build up student skills in these other areas because it's not just about STEM, right? And even if you are a STEM person, there's still other places to be developed. Just to piggyback when you just said about not having to be the smartest person in the room, the book Outliers talks about the fact that you don't have to be the smartest, but you do have to be smart enough. You just have to be smart enough. You don't have to be the smartest. And the kids who, and the adults who succeed more are not necessarily the smartest people. They're just smart enough because they have a combination of not only intelligence, critical thinking, and these other soft skills that make them successful in the work that they do. So thank you for that article and I look forward for all of us really kind of embracing that and looking forward for the next 12 months of 2019. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Walker. I agree that article is, it's right on and it's, thank you for sharing that, Mr. Martinez. I know because one of my children majored in music, which traditionally, well, he has two degrees in music, but, and he's playing with, primarily with one band, it's called Fat Cat Swinger, Phat spelled P-H-A-T. And they just finished a 62-night-in-a-row gig at California Adventure. And they're going to be performing at Disneyland as well this month, I think, and later next month. So they've been getting some pretty big gigs lately and so it's pretty exciting and, but that's his passion, you know? And, I mean, he's struggled quite a bit, but he's doing okay. Anyway, welcome back from winter break and I hope everybody had a wonderful holiday You know, when I was a math teacher, I had many, many students who had an attitude in their head that they could not do math. I heard that over and over, oh, I can't do math. Well, first of all, anyone can do math. You know, it's all in the approach and it's all in the mental attitude of being able to do it. So I came across this short story that I wanted to share tonight because I think it's a, it kind of says a lot. It's called "The Elephant Rope." And a gentleman was walking through an elephant camp and he spotted elephants weren't being kept in cages or held by the use of chains. They were just, they're free. They were just, they're free. All that was holding them back from escaping the camp was a small rope tied to one of their legs. As the man gazed upon the elephants, he was completely confused as to why the elephants didn't just use their strength to break the rope and escape, which they could have easily done, but they didn't even try. Curious and wanting to know the answer, he asked one of the trainers why the elephants were just standing there and never tried to escape. The trainer replied, "When they are very young and much smaller, we use the same-size rope to tie them, and at that age, it's enough to hold them. As they grow up, they are conditioned to believe they cannot break away. They believe the rope can still hold them, so they never even try to break free." The only reason that the elephants weren't breaking free and escaping the camp was that over time, they adopted the belief that it just wasn't possible. The moral of the story, no matter how much the world tries to hold you back, always continue to believe that what you want to achieve is possible. Believing you can be successful is the most important step in actually achieving it. So I think that's a good message to our students and to us as adults, but especially to our students. You have to believe you can do it, and you will do it. I want to also congratulate the PBIS Award winners again. Good job. I'm glad the program is going so well in our district. And also, congratulations to the CSCE officers, and thank you for coming tonight and sharing with us. And basically, that's it. Have a wonderful night and happy 2019. I really am old. Okay, now we're going to get on with the agenda, the Consent Calendar. All items on the Consent Calendar will be acted upon in one motion unless pulled by the Board of Education members or the Superintendent for Individual Action. Approve Consent, can I have a motion to approve Consent Calendar items E through J?
So moved.
Can I have a second?
Second.
And are there any polls? I have a poll on H6. Anybody else? Okay. Well, you'd be next in line, so. Okay, I just want to make sure, this is the one about approving an agreement with Miller Architectural Corporation to provide architectural services required for the Myler High School kitchen expansion project. And it's being paid out of Measure Y funds. So my question is, or my statement is, I just wanted to make sure that we have enough money in the Measure Y account to make sure everything is finished and perfect at Eisenhower before we keep adding to it.
Yes, we do. And we definitely hear your concerns.
I mean, I'm very happy to do this project as long as there's enough money in that account.
Yes, Mr. [inaudible].
And Eisenhower doesn't get any cuts. Because at one point, no. At one point, we, at the meetings, we were having to make some cuts to make sure, make things fit. So did we get more money, or what happened?
Well, again, the project is almost the end of the project, Eisenhower Performing Theater, 99.9% is done. So we reconciled the fund, see what is available.
Okay.
So this is a project, part of the Measure Y project. Myler High School needs our cafeteria, indoor cafeteria for our students. So this is something we waited until the fund is available, so now I'm bringing it to the Board.
Eisenhower is 100% complete at this time?
And it will, it will.
Pardon me?
Yes.
It is, okay. All right. Before I hand the gavel back, right, make sure Eisenhower is completely... Okay, so...
Dr. Avalos, I want to say... So the theater is not complete. The funding for it is there, we only have the minor last, like checklist of minor things that need to be attached. That's all it is.
That isn't like saying the check is in the mail, is it?
The fund is obligated for the project. I was saying, we, I call 99.9% is complete. We're doing this final checklist.
Okay.
To make sure everything's done according to the plan.
Well, we just have to make sure it's 100% complete.
Yes.
And 100% perfect.
You're correct.
Okay.
We will not bring the project completion until we check everything is done.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so can we get a vote on E through J? All in favor?
Preferential vote.
Oh, I'm sorry. Preferential vote by Student Board Member?
Aye.
And Board Members?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Discussion Action Items, can I have a motion?
So moved, move into Discussion Action Items?
And move to approve number one, deny liability claim number 181911.
We need a second, though.
We need a second, right.
I need a second.
Says somebody? Okay. And vote by Board Members?
Aye.
Okay, number two, ratify a 2% increase to the classified hourly daily pay schedule effective January 1st, 2019, at a cost of $47,150 to be paid from the general fund. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And number three, approve the recommendations of the Administrative Hearing Panel, stipulated expulsions, case numbers 181929, 181928, 181924, and reinstatement of expulsion, case number 181912. Can I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. The next regular Board meeting of the Board of Education of the Rialto Unified School District will be held on Wednesday, January 23rd at 7:00 PM at the Dr. John R. Casalunas Education Center, 182 East Walnut Avenue, Rialto, California. Materials distributed or presented to the Board of Education at the Board meeting are available upon request from the Superintendent's Office. Okay. Student Board Member, Ms. Jasmine, do you want to make a motion to adjourn?
Yes, motion to adjournment?
Second?
Second.
Preferential vote by Student Board Member?
Aye.
Board Members?
Aye.
Okay. The meeting is over at adjourned, I'm sorry, at 8:04.